... people and their successors, the Tulalip tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion for the approval of the minutes of January 18th and January 25th, 2023?
Councilmember Ryan, some moves?
Councilmember Tuie, seconds?
We have a motion.
Councilmember Tuie, seconds?
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve minutes for both days. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Tuie?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey?
Clarification.
Which dates?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. It was 18th and the 25th.
Okay.
The 25th was for the retreat.
The retreat was on the 25th.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
18th was the super short one.
The super short meeting on the 18th.
Well, then, do I have to abstain?
Maybe abstain from that, yes.
Councilmembers Arlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes, I have a question also. Because last week, we said yes to two in a row where somebody had to abstain, but they only missed one. Maybe it's not a big deal, but maybe we should future take them separately?
Take them separately, correct.
Okay, yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes, my apologies. In the future, we will take those once at a time. And so also, we move next to appointments to the commission. So yesterday, an email received by councilmembers were from the mayor, Franklin. She's requesting council concurrence for the following appointments to the Citizens Advisory Board, Advisory Board. Cindy Bonner to position number one. That term is expiring on December 31st, 2028. Michael O'Gorman to position number two. That term will be expiring on December 31st, 2026. And Christina Aho to position number seven, and the term will be expiring on December 31st of 2028. Do I hear a motion?
Councilmember Ryan gladly moves.
Vogel, seconds.
And do we have any questions or comments? Councilmember Vogel?
Welcome to the new members. I read your stuff, and it looks good, and I appreciate, we probably all do, you coming to the table.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryan?
I concur.
Thank you. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Tuie?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey?
Yes.
Councilmembers Arlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes. And before we move into our full agenda, I just want to take a minute to discuss a change to the meeting time for the fourth Wednesday of the month, which we briefly discussed last week at the council retreat. And I thought, we have done some research, and it looks like we will need to bring an ordinance forward to change our official meeting times for good, which would require through readings. But in the meantime, my intention is to call a special meeting for the meeting on February 22nd, which is our fourth meeting, would normally be a daytime meeting, and we would cancel then that daytime meeting and have an evening meeting, and at 6:30 PM. And so I just wanted to alert you that that is my intention. If you have any concerns with that, you can email me offline, and then we can discuss it. If it's too soon to make that change, we will do that. And then again, we'll be working on an ordinance to formalize the meeting times in the future, and then we'll come back. Any questions or comments about that? Okay. We'll move on to comments from the publics. Angie, do we have any signed up, anyone who signed up to speak this evening?
We do, but first, we have four written comments from the following individuals: Gary and Arty McLean, Dylan Sluter, Rosela Hajazi, and Christina Sim. These have all been provided to council administration and to the clerk to be part of the permanent record. And we have four individuals here in chambers. And so first, if we could start with Holly, and then following Holly will be Shelley. So if you could come to the podium, please? And please state...
Do you want these copies?
Oh, do you want those to go to council members? Okay. And then if you can turn on the mic with the right button, state your full name, city of residence, and then you'll have three minutes to speak, and you'll be alerted at 30 seconds.
Do I have to hold the button down while we talk?
No.
Hello, my name's Holly James. I live at 1220 Colby Avenue in Everett, Washington, 98201. Dear city council members, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. I am here on behalf of the Northwest Neighborhood Association. We are the homes and businesses west of Broadway, north of 19th, and encompassing Marine View Drive. We absorb Providence Hospital, Everett Community College, Whittier Elementary, the Port of Everett, and five city parks. Today, I would like to call your attention to our current nuisance property at 1301 Lombard Avenue, the Waits Motel, as neighbors have been robbed, attacked, insulted, prowled, and sickened by the population that frequent the hotel. The Waits Motel supports prostitution, drug sales, counterfeit money operations, assaults, drug use, garbage production, and misuse of housing state funds. The 911 calls for this address for the year 2020 were 195. For 2021, they were 204, and for 2022, we topped off at 224. At this time, we would like you to ask, we are asking for four things: to support the Everett Police Department and Code's compliance by involving Snohomish County Health District and Washington State Department of Health to assemble and continue the plan to shut down the motel immediately; to revert the property back to the original zoning; number three, to adopt a similar approach as Mary Zill did in 2018 and 2022 by recognizing addiction as mental illness and having the two-pronged approach of treatment or jail time; and establishing a new parking policy that eliminates the opportunity for people living in cars to take up residence on our city streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Shelley, if you could come to the podium, please? After Shelley will be Bob. If you could please state your full name, city of residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
Hi, I'm Shelley Whitkop. I live at 1501 Rucker Avenue, and I'm the vice chair of the Northwest Neighborhood Association. The Waits Motel has been nothing but a nuisance property for over 20 years. This place needs to be shut down like the other nuisance hotels were, such as Topper Motel at Broadway and 10th was. In July 2016, when I was the neighborhood chair, Officer Jack Jessup and Chief Templeton, and I met with the Lombard neighbors who are here, it seems efforts were going to be made to persuade the VOA and Compass Health to not place people in these motels. Code enforcement was going to look into hot plate use violations, and I had a family contact me who had recently moved out because of black mold. But what happened? These are the tools used before to shut down the filthy motel.
That's not you. That was from before. Keep going. I blew it.
So now it's nine years later. We have the same issues, along with drug use, prostitution, and everything else that Holly explained to you. And now it seems the state of Washington is paying for placing persons getting out of jail at this location. I'm not sure about that, if that's totally accurate, but that's what we're hearing. This just breeds the cycle of crime, drugs, prostitution. Is this what our city and neighborhood have to embrace? Continual neglect of private property for the Lombard neighbors, and tolerance of open drug use, drug dealing, and stolen property exchanges in the Waits Courtyard. As was then and is now, the 7-Eleven right behind the Waits has continued crime issues that bleeds over into our neighborhood as well. We ask that the city use all measures to shut down this location, which is a detriment to our community and a waste of time for the Everett Police Department and Emergency Services that have to continually respond to problems there. And Holly has already addressed the number of times. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. Bob, if you could please come to the podium, and then next will be Paula. So please state your full name, city of residence, and three minutes to speak.
Sure, my name's Bob Bull. I lived at 1325 Lombard for 44 years. I bought our house in 1979 and moved in, and the Waits Motel in those days was a beautiful little place in the middle of a neighborhood. We want to emphasize the fact that this is a residential neighborhood, and that was a zoning variance, and that's why we're asking it to be returned back to our two, so that only houses can be built there. We have been fighting this motel since 2000, and I think the only city council member that was here then is Councilmember Stonecifer, who hopefully remembers all of our complaints and all that we went through at that time, and are still going through to this day. I can't tell you. It is public health. It is public safety. There are people smoking fentanyl or fentanyl in the back of our property, behind the fence. We learned how it smelled by talking to the police. If you ever smell that, like burning electricity, that's kind of like that. We smell it all the time. We bought a German Shepherd just here recently to protect us. We're both retired. We're in our 70s. We love this city. It is so beautiful, and it's such a wonderful place to live. This is terrible. This is a scourge and a stain on the city of Everett. The gateway to Providence Everett Medical Center is on 13th Avenue, and people have to drive by there all the time and see those people standing there are homeless because of drug addiction, have nowhere to go, but they can buy their drugs at that motel. This city allowed that motel to build what amounts to the Berlin Wall, so high with concrete and chain-link fencing, and then arborvitae trees, so that you can't see in there. It is a compound, and nobody can see in there, including the police, because you can't see anything. They pass drugs through those fences right onto the street. We see it all the time. We complain all the time. The police, thank goodness, always respond and are always positive. Their hands are tied. Three offenses before you're even charged with a misdemeanor. And then, I don't know what happens after that, but it seems that nothing's happening. It just continues. Garbage everywhere. The city's kind enough to send Public Works out there now. Every Tuesday, they come up and clean around that motel, because it's so filled with litter. Incidentally, the motel is for sale now. You can buy that for $2.58 million, even though it's been assessed at $1.7 million. Since it's been declared a nuisance property, the owner no longer wants any part of it. So now he's going to sell it, so nobody can be held responsible, and the cycle begins again. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bob. And our last commenter is Paula. If you could please come to the podium? And please state your full name and city of residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
Paula, council, District 3 resident. I too love my city, and I'm very delighted when I see democracy happening in this very chamber. Tonight, I'm excited to be here, because we have a public hearing on the record tonight, and I'm excited to take notes about that and better understand the city's process on public hearing, because as you've all heard from me in the past, this city failed to have a redistricting public hearing. So I will see what new things I can glean tonight, and we can bring more attention to that next week. I also want to thank the city council members and your facilitator last week. The retreat was amazing. Coming into the 21st century is really important for this council. We have changed tremendously in the last 100 years, and I look forward to the growth to come. I did put in a public information request last year, asking for a copy of the 2022 Redistricting Commission's public hearing agenda, the minutes, and any recording of said public hearing. Consistently, and I'm not faulting the clerk, I think they do a great job, however, what I'm being fed back, and I know that administration and legal is aware of what comes in to them for public information requests, but I'm being fed back just the generic meetings that happened in the redistricting commission. There's no public hearing. There's no public hearing like you're going to have tonight, where if I have something to bring forward, or any resident in this room can come forward and bring that to you for three minutes uninterrupted. That's really amazing, because when you speak at the community meetings and the redistricting, you will be interrupted. They interrupt you when you're not talking loud enough for them to hear you over the traffic. They interrupt you when they have something to interject to what you're saying in your time. They interrupt you when you're at a meeting that doesn't have a quorum, when there aren't even a minority number of members present. Then, when you go to the one hybrid at-large city meeting, you can't speak, because somebody already heard from you, even though when I attended, there were numerous members present that had not heard me speak previously. So I am looking forward to your public hearing tonight. I am looking forward to finding out what an emergency ordinance is about and condemnation of private rights is about when lawfully done and following due process, because all of this matters. I love this city. We're going to get this redistricting concluded correctly, even if I have to keep coming back. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. And President Stonecifer, that's all the public comments tonight.
I'm not on. I'm sorry. Thank you. We lost my agenda here. Okay, I think we are moving on to administrative update. Do we have an administrative update this evening?
No update tonight.
Thank you. And Mr. Hall, anything from the city attorney's office?
We are requesting a five-minute executive session to discuss a litigation matter pursuant to RCW 423110I, and I do have a very brief report. As you know, Ms. Townsall submitted a written complaint to the city a couple of weeks ago. I told you that I would get back to you when we'd had a chance to review that. We've reviewed that, and in just brief summary, it didn't raise any new allegations that you haven't heard several times, and that I haven't spoken to you about a couple of times. So our legal conclusion remains the same, which is there is no legal justification to rescind your approval.
Thank you. And we will move on to our consent agenda. Do I hear a motion for the nine consent items?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any questions or comments? Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Tuie?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey?
Yes.
Councilmembers Arlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes. We have one item on our proposed action item, item 10. It's been read into the record. Are there any questions on the proposed action item? Thank you. We will move on to our action items. Item 11, adopt the resolution approving the 2023 Human Needs Grant allocations and authorizing the mayor or her designee to execute contracts with grant recipients. Do I hear a motion?
Councilmember Ryan, some moves.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tuie, seconds?
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Tuie?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey?
Yes.
Councilmembers Arlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes. And we have our Economic Development Director, Dan Ernesti, here to summarize action item 12 and share next steps with council regarding changes to the Downtown Everett Business Association BIA Improvement Area. And it sounds like Dan has worked with the association board to bring forward these changes, so.
Yes, thank you very much. I will just be brief. The BIA area, the Downtown Improvement District, is assessed each year to support the work of, that we contract out to the Downtown Everett Association for. When we established the ordinance, we had an annual escalator based on CPI. We did not anticipate the size of CPI that we experienced this past year, which is over 10%, and we are worried that it will cause both a hardship and just bad feelings toward the property owners and the Downtown Everett Association and the city, frankly. So the staff proactively reached out to the Downtown Everett Association, which is frankly the only group that is harmed by putting a cap on there, because it reduces the amount of money that we can pay them to manage the BIA. And they supported a 5% cap. They actually had polled several other downtown groups that were taking similar action. And so we went to the executive committee first and got unanimous support, and then we went to the board and got unanimous support. Liz Stanning, the executive director, is here, if you have any questions of her. But the resolution that you are considering tonight puts a public hearing, an ordinance, of an ordinance that will place that cap on the annual assessments through 2025. At that point, the DEA, when the city, will seek a new ordinance, because we renew it every five years.
Thank you. And I'll see if there are any questions before we take a motion on just setting the date. Any questions? Okay, I'll read item 12 now. Adopt a resolution setting a public hearing before the city council to receive comments on the city's intent to modify the special assessment levy of the Downtown Business Improvement Area. Do I hear a motion?
Councilmember Ryan, some moves.
Vogel, seconds.
Thank you. And before we take the roll, any last questions or comments? Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Tuie?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey?
Yes.
Councilmembers Arlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes. Item 13 requires a public hearing prior to council action. I will first read the item into the record. This is an emergency ordinance, and therefore, all three readings are being combined on tonight's agenda. Item 13 is Council Bill 2302-02, first, second, third, and final reading. Adopt emergency ordinance providing for the acquisition by eminent domain of property for the purpose of the Edgewater Bridge replacement project and authorizing payment from the city's project funds or from such other monies that the city may have available or attain for the acquisition. And I will now open the public hearing. And I'll start by asking city attorney, do you have, do you want to introduce this item for us?
Yes, I just want to give you a little bit of the legal background here, and then turn it over to Ryan. As you mentioned, it's an ordinance for eminent domain. Some folks might better know that as condemnation. As we'll be explaining in a couple of minutes, the city needs certain properties for the Edgewater Bridge replacement. Once this ordinance is passed, the city is authorized to start a court proceeding to take the needed properties in exchange for payments to property owners at fair market value, as required by state law. State law requires that a hearing occur before this ordinance is voted on. That's why it's listed as a hearing on the agenda. It also requires that certain notices occur before the hearing. Those have been done, and notices have been placed in the Herald as required for the past two weeks. The reason this is called an emergency ordinance is because under the city charter, that means all three readings are condensed into one meeting, and it goes into effect immediately upon signature by the mayor, rather than 15 days after signature, as normally the case. And as Ryan or Darcy, I think, will explain, we need to do that to meet the timeline here. The city charter gives you a lot of discretion in deciding what an emergency is, not like other situations, for example, to adopt an emergency resolution, to expedite purchasing. That is a specific definition of emergency under state law in our purchasing policies. Emergency, as used in the charter, for this purpose is very broad, and it is up to you to decide it's an emergency, and as you'll hear, it clearly qualifies here. I should emphasize that this ordinance authorizes a court proceeding, but it doesn't require it. Based on the progress over the past couple of weeks with property owners, it seems pretty likely that a court proceeding will not be ultimately necessary, but the ordinance should be passed now, so that we're ready to move quickly if there are any hiccups in that process. Finally, I'm sure you can appreciate the Real Property staff in discussions with property owners, so it is inappropriate a public session for staff to discuss details of those discussions. With that, I'll turn it over to Ryan.
Good evening. Ryan Sasse with Public Works. It's certainly not uncommon for us to need to purchase property or temporary construction easements for building our infrastructure, and this is one of those cases. The city has a long history of good faith negotiations with property owners, and again, this is no different. This project has endured a delay based during COVID at the state level in terms of getting various environmental processes completed, and this is really a precautionary measure to make sure that we don't endure additional delay by a long, drawn-out negotiation and miss another construction season, especially at a time when inflation makes delays very costly. With that, I'd like to introduce Darcy Byrd from Real Property, who has a brief presentation, and then City Engineer Tom Hood is also available, if you have questions.
Thank you, Ryan, and thank you, David. As David said, the proposed ordinance before you authorizes acquisition of property by eminent domain. You'll see our aerial view here. North is up, just for perspective. So the project plan shown here illustrates the four properties that have been identified to have an acquisition area necessary to the project. Starting from top left, you have parcel one, and then parcel two to the right. On the bottom left, you'll have parcel four and parcel five on the bottom right. Parcel one is already made a final agreement and is not part of this ordinance. It's shown on the slide, just for reference. You will note that temporary easements are indicated in yellow, and a temporary easement means that the property is only needed during construction and then is given back to the owner upon completion. Property to be purchased for permanent city use is indicated in green, and hopefully you can see that on the slide. Let me know if you have questions about that. Also notice that the property areas are in unusable ravines and similar. To date, especially during the last week or so, the city has made substantial progress with the remaining property owners. In at least one case, we are almost done. In other cases, we are reaching agreements where the owners agree to let their properties be used for the project now, pending later determination on the final price. And I want to thank the property owners for working with us on this and the progress that we are making. While we are making good progress, not everything is completely wrapped up, and as David stated, there can be hiccups. Because of that, acquisition by eminent domain could still become necessary. So as David mentioned, the ordinance before you is still needed, just in case. And I will take any questions. Tom Hood is also here, if he has any remarks.
No.
Nope. He's here to answer questions, then. Yes.
Thank you. Do we have questions from Councilmember Vogel?
Yes, thank you very much, and I had asked a lot of questions previously, but you probably, that's not the point. When it is through, let's see, when it's acquired for just temporary use, and you said it's given back, do we purchase for temporary use?
We pay for rights for any use of anybody's land, and we reach that through a fair market evaluation.
For the time, so we're not purchasing forever, purchasing for part-time.
Correct. It's like renting, I suppose.
That's what I needed. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Arlingo?
Yeah, I see marked on there some other easements who were in drainage easements. I guess those are existing easements, so that really is not interfering with.
That is correct.
And I, my correction, assuming that some of the easements here are needed because the new bridge will be significantly bigger than the old one?
Tom, do you want to answer those?
Tom Hood, Public Works? Yes, that's correct. We have an enlarged footprint for the new bridge. We're adding non-motorized facilities for that, so the footprint will be wider. In addition, we'll be using a temporary bridge, cantilevered from each side of the ravine out, that we'll use for work staging to demolish the existing bridge and then replace it with a new bridge in essentially the same location. And then we'll remove the temporary bridge when we're done.
And last question, I guess, it does not sound like any of these, any of the property you acquire permanently is really going to damage or make unusable property that would otherwise be usable or developable for other purposes? These are, I mean, there are some times when you're condemning something, you're taking enough of something that you render the rest of it either dramatically less useful or not useful at all. It doesn't sound like we're in any of that territory here.
As far as we can tell, no. The way things are zoned and what we're using while we're using it and what will be left, it'll be either... it'll be either be the same as it was before or not render any of the remaining property less usable than it already is.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Vice President Tui?
Yeah, thanks for that presentation. And can you just remind us again when the, what the bridge closure timeframe looks like?
Well, right now, it depends on the acquisition. We have, once these parcels are acquired, at least in possession and use, we then have a process of of likely up to two months with WashDOT because of the federal funds. We'll have to go through a review of our construction documents and get construction authorization from them. We can't start that process until we've certified right of way acquisition, which is what we're here for tonight.
Okay. And then how long is it going to be inaccessible?
We have a nine month closure plan.
Okay. Because I know there's a lot of, you know, residents that live there that travel, schools on the other side of the bridge and all kinds of things, so.
We've been, yes, we've been working with Muckelteel School District, especially for the last few years, timing, trying to time our closure for that will benefit them the most. And and this this will very much impact that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you. Having had a family member lose a home to eminent domain, this is a little bit touchy for me. So I was curious when the first, when conversations were initiated with the property owners?
A little over a year ago, we started talking to the property owners. And of course, you know, we don't want to get into specifics with the individual level. But they they were made aware of it prior to we actually starting conversations. And offers went out in September. So they've been deliberating on actual offers since September.
Okay. Are there any physical structures that will be obtained in any of these spaces?
There's no relocation of any structures or things that are part of their property at all. It's merely use of their existing property. But yeah, again, no structures.
Thank you. And I guess I appreciate a recap of why, again, it's an emergency ordinance instead of the full due process.
Well, I don't think it's lack of due process, but it's not our full three readings. You guys can probably better explain the timing requirements in your your federal process and state process and why we need to get this done now.
Sure, absolutely. Typically, when we look at bid windows for construction advertisement, the best bids are obtained when you go to add in the first quarter of any calendar year. Contractors are looking for projects at that point. They're putting out bids, looking to fill their dockets for the coming construction season. As you move past the first quarter especially, contractors have jobs. They've been awarded, and the bid pool shrinks. Cost goes up considerably because of that shrunken bid pool. In addition, we've been working on a a construction cost inflation index that's far exceeded the rate of inflation lately. And so on a $20 million plus project, even a month delay can add, you know, nearly seven figures to the construction cost. That's all local money as we have $15 million of Fed money.
Thanks. Excuse me. Thank you. So is there a reason that it wasn't a first reading at the beginning of January to have the the finish line be about the same time that we're seeing tonight?
I think it was. It was, we made the determination that this is is becoming problematic from a timeline standpoint. And, you know, the decision was made collectively to bring it as an emergency ordinance, giving, given that we are. Right of way negotiations are a difficult thing to to do with property owners. It just, time passes quickly and you're waiting and you, you know, you're negotiating. And time can can pass by. And so we we collectively made the decision to bring in emergency ordinance, given where we are in the timeframe.
Councilmember Ryan, I might add, because I understand your question, and if this gives you a little bit of comfort, emergency means different things in different contexts. And there are other contexts in which you're not allowed to call something an emergency if it is self inflicted, which I think is what you're getting at here. That's not the case in in our charter. You have very broad discretion to label it an emergency ordinance to expedite the passage of it when it's needed. And this is one of those situations. But great question.
That's all for me. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Angie, do we have anyone signed up to speak at the public hearing this evening?
No, we do not.
Okay. Is there anyone here who would like to speak and didn't sign up? Please come forward. You know the drill.
Paula, council, District Three resident here in Everett. I want to tell you, we have an amazing Public Works department. They do due diligence. The information presented tonight was easy to follow, and it was concise. And I was able to give a resident with a little bit more knowledge than others the background on this to feel very confident with what we're doing with our public tax dollars and the process here. What I really want to point out is that they know, you may not know, I know, WashDOT is running really behind on things these days. If we were to delay this unnecessarily, we could create a real hardship for our city, for the residents, the taxpayers, the cost. So I do encourage you to go ahead and approve this tonight. It is a very important ordinance. I also would question, there might be a little added value for those neighbors who are abutting and getting something for the temporary easement as well as the permanent easements. There might be a bump up in the value of their property if they're next to an adequate bridge that is not failing like so many in our state are currently. But that's something I'm sure the appraisers have looked at because they also know what they're doing. Thank you for your consideration tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, please come forward, state your name and city residence for the record.
Hi, I'm Bob Olligan. I just wondered, whoops.
Thank you. We had, I had made that quick presentation and didn't ask anybody if they had any questions or comments about our predicament out there on the north end, particularly the 1300 block of Lombard.
Yes, and we will probably comment on that. We're coming to the end of our agenda when we have council liaison and council, our our own committee, our our own comments and reports. So we will probably have some discussion at that time.
Thank you.
Hang on, Bob. Thanks. Anyone else to speak to the public hearing? Please come forward, state your name and address for their city of residence for the record.
Mary Rollins, District Two, Everett. Thank you very much for having this hearing. I really appreciated your question because that was the question I also had, Paula. What was the, what's the, what's the emergency? And I appreciated the answers, and I appreciated the clarity. Because my mom had had been in that role in Caltrans, doing eminent domain to build a freeway. That was her main job. So one of the main freeways that goes to LAX, she negotiated all those properties. And I learned and heard about all that growing up. But what I want to say is the thoughtful presentations, the fact that citizens can come and comment. So all the questions that I had to come up and say were asked by council and answered. And I just really appreciate the time and effort. And, you know, infrastructure, it's a big deal. And the time will go by, and people will be glad that they have a safe bridge to travel over. So thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else before we close the public hearing? I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Do we make some motion?
Fosse seconds.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Tui?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmembers Arlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes. And now is there a motion to adopt Council Bill 2302-02?
So moved.
Councilmember seconds. Councilmember Tui seconds.
Thank you. Final questions or comments before we call the roll? Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Tui?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmembers Arlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes. Okay, we are now moving on to our council priorities discussion. And I want to thank my council colleagues for being at the retreat last week. We had a lot of good discussion about roles and responsibilities, priorities, our guidelines for communication, council committees. And then we talked a little bit about council procedure revisions. And welcome back tonight, Kathy Solberg. She's going to help us continue the discussion on council priorities for the coming, for this current 2023 year. I'm hoping that on February 8th, we can determine our priorities based on what we're discussing tonight. I sent around the list by email this afternoon, although you'd received the list in the the PowerPoint previously. There's a couple of other topics that came up at the retreat that will have, that kind of have their own pathway. We'll be getting a report from Kathy this week, I think, or next week, so that we can look at her recommendations for how we can tackle a couple of those other things. But now we will be talking about our priorities for the coming year. So I guess I'll just pass it over to you, Kathy.
Thank you, President Stonecifer. I understand that we have a list that we ended with at the retreat last week of 10 priorities that were a combination of the discussion that we shared at the retreat, as well as my individual conversations with you to decide where you thought that priorities or consensus existed between yourself and at least three other council members. So before we actually voted on which of the priorities the council would want to move into the new year, it has been suggested that I go through the 10 priorities. Do you have them in front of you by chance? Thank you. And ask what, I'll go priority by priority, with the question to each of you of what would you put forward underneath that priority as far as a consideration that the council would work on? So the first priority I would ask, and how I thought to go through it, is we'll start with housing. And are, is there anything that you would want to move forward under the housing so we can have a more comprehensive idea of what we are voting on and the topics under each?
Councilmember Vogely?
I'm going to see if I'm going the right direction here. Rental registry?
Bingo.
All right. And there's a win for rental registry.
Councilmember Ryan?
Tenant protections. I got 84 more under housing.
I'll throw out some kind of revolving loan fund for homeownership opportunities for those who need assistance to get into a home. Councilmember Ryan?
Increasing housing density. Meeting the objection, objectives of the Rethink Housing Plan.
Slash ADUs, because duh. Strike the duh.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yeah, I'd like to review the zoning requirements on our transportation corridors, Broadway and Evergreen Way specifically.
Yeah, I think there's some exploration of why we aren't seeing density in the places where we have upzoned substantially over the past decade, some of our land, especially in the Evergreen Way, Broadway, downtown and station district areas.
Any other considerations under housing?
Addressing the missing middle.
Councilmembers Arlingo?
And just to note that several of these things may be affected by state legislation. So we will know that in a couple of months.
Yes.
And piggybacking? I don't know. Councilmembers Arlingo, I don't know if it's, goes under housing, but considering there's legislation at the state level, being privy and discussing that as the legislature goes forward? That sounds like good work for a committee. Councilmember Schwab?
Yeah, I think we're planning on having a couple of presentations because of our discussion, instead of just in the committee that we're going to come forward and they're going to do a presentation. Mayor staff and our representative, our governmental affairs representative that we hired is going to do a presentation. And it would be nice, we're certainly going to get one at the end of the session. So it would be good to get a briefing on what type of housing bills are passed and signed.
Anything else?
Clarifying question. What did you call governmental liaison? What's the title? Do you know?
Lobbyist.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
It might be a little bit broad, but just addressing affordability in the community and municipal incentives for affordable housing, separate thing.
Anything else on housing?
Everything that comes up because we need more of it.
Okay, so moving.
All shapes and sizes, sorry.
Moving on to the next priority was homelessness, which aligns also with the mayor's priority of housing for all. But homelessness was designated as a priority. Is there anything you see moving forward under, that would impact homelessness? Vice President Tui?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I would like us to really look at at creating a day center for the homeless. So there are places to go that they can shower and clean up and instead of just wandering around. So I think that would be a good thing.
Councilmembers Arlingo and then Councilmember Fosse?
A kind of a quick note that I think there's clear evidence that that housing homelessness and public safety are highly interrelated. And the work we're trying to do to get better housing supply should help both homelessness and public safety. And I guess I, I want to, I want to keep in mind, I think we all should keep in mind as we're working on these things, the effects back and forth so that we do the best job we can.
So I guess, backing up just a little bit, I see the listed priorities in the email that you had sent. And it's. It seems like, as Councilmember Arlingo was chatting about, some of these are more all encompassing. And I had chatted with you at the very end when we're thinking about some of these priorities and kind of rephrasing maybe the way that we're looking at them as actual goals. And so in those, instead of just saying, you know, public safety and police, you know, say what our goal is, is so, you know, safer communities and have that be a priority. And then the items that fall under that kind of tent would be what we would focus on. Because just saying housing, you know, it's, it's, I don't know, it just falls under a barrier of tent because this is such a long list. And I don't think we can do a committee for each one of these.
No.
But if we have like goals that we're actually striving towards, so we can actually house some of these under there because they have a lot of overlap on here. And I think when Councilmember Ryan had brought forward kind of those more broad topics of ideas for committees, that seems like, I don't know, it's just a very, very long list. So is that where we're going with this?
In my recommendation, I would also align them with the three committees, public safety, the Parks and Quality of Life Committee, and the built environment that would add to the focus for those committees to look at.
to the focus for those committees to look at and discern on that list with whatever fell into the public safety or the Parks and Quality of Life Committee. You would have this list of priorities that you would designate, and then that committee would do the work of sifting through.
Okay. The purpose of our discussion today is because these were topical areas that came up in your discussions with Kathy. And multiple people probably said housing, but what we're trying to flesh out here is what does that mean to us? Because we may all have like a totally different idea of that. So we kind of wanted to get an idea of what is the work, sort of what's the, what is, what are the places of exploration under each of these topical areas that council members were thinking of when they threw them out? Because I don't want to presume, you know, one thing and then find out, oh, that was actually something else and it would just dovetail. And I think we'll have to be a little bit flexible, because once we have kind of, when we look through all these things, Kathy will be kind of advising. I, when I say like, I'm not gonna say, oh, we're gonna have three priorities this year and it's one, you know, three of these items, because we may end up mushing a couple of them together and saying, okay, this is the work that we think this committee should be working on. And that is what that committee should be working on. But we recognize that probably there's a laundry list of stuff in here that we can't accomplish this year. But I kind of wanted to get a better sense of what people were thinking of when they were talking about these topical areas, because, you know, again, we may all think something different. So that's what we're doing right now, just throw it all out, whatever, anything you were thinking about in any of these areas, throw it out and then we'll figure out, or Kathy, that's what we're paying her for, will help us figure out how to kind of put them together, what things belong together.
It was helpful to me.
Homelessness.
Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you. Preventing homelessness, I think it costs far less to keep somebody housed than to help a person who's experiencing homelessness become rehoused. And the system that we have, you have to be literally homeless to access certain services. So that's a big barrier to people who need help before they become literally homeless.
Councilmember Vogel, then Councilmember Schwab.
I'm just gonna add that you also have to be like addicted to something and, and homeless and having issues with your kids in order to get services. So if you're just homeless, but you're not addicted, being able to get into, hopefully not the Waits Motel, it is quite the barrier. So yes, preventing homelessness.
Yeah, just for discussion sakes, most of our residents and those that call Everett Home see people wandering the streets, on the sidewalks, in alleys, in parked cars, motor homes. I really would like to reduce that number. But there's also, so when I think of that, I think of treatment. And then there's another group that we don't see, the so-called couch surfers, those that are staying or living with friends, family until they wear that welcome out and go to another place. Those that are staying in shelters and are, are receiving services. And how do we get them into, into home, into a long-term housing? So those are kind of the two areas that I'd like to focus on.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryan.
Thanks. To piggyback, there's our word again, on Councilmember Vogel's mention, increasing shelter space, overnight shelter space, I think would be great, and also increasing the, I guess, the type of sheltering space, because certain shelters will only accept single women without children, or other shelters will only accept men, but there isn't a shelter for a person with their service animal, and there's not a shelter for couples that need a place to stay. So just the increasing shelter, overnight shelter beds, because on any given night, there's about 500 people in Snoomish County that don't have access to a safe indoor place to sleep overnight. So increasing shelter beds and increasing the, or broadening the qualifications for folks who can stay there.
Anything else?
Yeah, I guess just further the process, I know we duped the city of Everett, I'm pretty proud of it. We, we are very cognitive of their needs of our community and we're doing, you know, a lot of things. I would like to see some sort of evaluation on how we're doing. It's difficult to get a handle on it at times, and we get a point count from the county, what they, I'm glad they do that. Would be nice to get some sort of evaluation on how we're doing.
Councilmember Vogel.
I think I had almost the same thought. So like, there's the point in time count, but that's not really all that accurate. A public knowledge request, no, something that, when we say homeless, everybody has a different idea. I mean, which is exactly what we're talking about, right? But, you know, all those people out on the streets are what we're seeing, but they're not necessarily all homeless, you know? But they're certainly taking up space next to Fred Meyer, right? Everybody needs space, okay? But having, yeah, some kind of just outreach, I think we can probably do that also as a council, not just through administration, but really being a part of the outreach to the community of what is going on, what are we seeing, how can we help?
Councilmember Ryan.
Megan, as part of the evaluation, I would love to see an evaluation of the continuum of services that are offered in the area. So everything from access to detox to a housing when you exit a treatment program, all the way up to, you know, assisted affordable housing and then permanent housing, just what that continuum looks like, where are the gaps? And then with an extra underlying bold asterisk, highlight star around detox in the county, the closest places up in Oak Harbor, I believe, for folks to access detox. And there is no place in the state of Washington for youth detox. So drug treatment services for people experiencing substance use disorder and homelessness, co-occurring disorders. That's all.
And Councilmembers Arango.
I know they're considering a methadone clinic in Lynnwood. We may want to see what we can learn from that. That's another element of making people successful and getting them back into the workforce. And therefore dollars for homeless, for housing.
I would love to see a report on the scope of services, because I feel like we know a little bit about every little thing, but just kind of understanding what's out there. And I know that some has developed and some has gone away, and so things, they're always in flux, but there's not always, we don't know, like, I hear rumors that there aren't any detox beds, and then I hear we have empty detox beds. So what is true?
Yes, almost like a registry would be helpful.
Anything else on homelessness?
And there, I would like to acknowledge, there are a lot of organizations that are already doing the work, so ways that the city can support those organizations that already have relationships with people experiencing homelessness and how we can bolster the good work that they're doing instead of recreating the wheel, maybe through increasing our human needs grants or something.
Councilmember Fosse.
In that vein of some sort of assessment, and I don't know if that comes from a concept of having contract staff being able to do that kind of work and policy work for us, but greater coordination with our surrounding areas that, because homelessness is not exclusive to us, we are the county seat, and so we do carry a lot of the resources, and a lot of our neighbors here have those needs, but there are needs throughout. And so having kind of that broader vision and knowing where we can interact and team up with others to address this issue and kind of exploring that would be valuable to me.
Moving on to public safety.
Well, I think one thing that I'd like to see is, we had a report done, and I know we all, we've received a good presentation about the report, but maybe kind of dusting that off and seeing if there was anything actionable in there that we need to be looking at in terms of our public safety services.
I'd like to have a greater understanding of what the C4 was that we were putting money towards and what they were doing with that. And are we, is it, okay. Public safety is kind of all encompassing, so we've got law enforcement, we've got first responders, fire, housing, homelessness, right? So I guess my question isn't, my question is, what are we talking about here, public safety? Yeah, come on, folks. Judy, or Councilmember Tuohy, I'm sure you have something.
Well, I would like to see, after the comments tonight on the Waits Hotel, is to take these hotspots like Fred Meyer and South Everett, Waits Motel, there's other places too, and just see what we can do working with our chief and seeing what we can do as far as working with other agencies to help mitigate some of this. I mean, the Waits Motel's been, it's like 20 years going, so we, I would like to see us figure out what we can do.
Early on last year, I was able to attend an Alternatives to Policing seminar. And the, the concept in that is not, you know, you know, anti-police. It's, it's more of, we know that police can't handle everything, they have a lot on their plate. So what are the alternative avenues that we have towards addressing these different, you know, community safety needs? So, and, and my hope initially in wanting to be a part of the Public Safety Committee that was created was to be able to pursue some of those options and do some of that research into other communities and what they were working on, and were those successful programs that we could also try and move forward to help, you know, kind of ease the burden on our, you know, overworked police department who has staffing issues to begin with. And so I would hope that any priority committee that we have that addresses those issues has that kind of line of sight of trying to find any sort of alternative avenues to help that aren't just strictly more police officers, or we're having issues with this with, and police are the only avenue to, to help us with this public safety issue.
Councilmember Vogel.
Go ahead, sorry. I've spoken, but I'll go after Councilmember Schwab.
You could go, my list is kind of long, so I'd like to look at the Everstructure part of our public safety, our police station and our fire, fire stations. I know there's some, some needs there. I'd like, I'd like to review the possibility of adding a domestic violence advocate. I would like to consider increasing our day internships in the prosecutor's office or attorney's, city attorney's office. Also, I discussed in the past about, and you'd mentioned, about non-civilian security-type people, public safety, is consider consolidating maybe some park rangers and some of our other security personnel that we have at the transit center. I am a little concerned about some of the safety perception of, on our parks. Like to see that addressed. I'm also concerned, and I'm gonna address a little bit later, is our out-of-service time that our EMS and fire personnel are spending at the emergency rooms when they drop, when they, they're hanging, they don't, they can't transfer custody of the patients because there's no one to receive them. So they, there's a lot of out-of-service time that they're concerned about.
Yeah, I think that out-of-service time for both police and fire is worthy of looking at. Are we, are our systems and, I mean, there's, there's, there's just delay and bureaucracy that occurs, report writing and things that you have to do. But have we made those as efficient as possible? And I think those are some of the things that might have been addressed in the, the police study that we received. But what is the best response for every thing that we've got going on? And what, I think we need to look at what things we just aren't, we can't respond to anymore. You know, we've talked about with police, like, your bike got stolen out of your garage, and yes, we are sorry that happened, but there's not a crime in progress. And so can we have an alternate method for dealing with that so that we can have our police officers dealing with true public safety emergencies? Councilmembers.
There's kind of an associated reason to have a streamlined and efficient process like that, not unlike what we're doing with picking up shopping carts. If you make it easy, then you can understand bike theft patterns. And while a bike theft might not be worth it, if you found a pattern that way, because it was easy to report and people weren't discouraged, then you might, that might justify that kind of action.
Yeah. Councilmember Vogel, and then Councilmember Schwab.
I'm taking it this time. Alternative response, absolutely. I think I've been speaking about that since the beginning of my tenure. And I know that our law enforcement understands that I'm not against law enforcement, but yes. So what can we do? How, and how can we work together with administration, not being a hindrance, but being, you know, a resource to, to get this moving forward, this alternative response? Yes, because we desperately need it. And I'll wait for the committee on that to really get into it.
That will, that will be good work. Councilmember Tuohy.
Yeah, well, I know that when we first, when Chief Templeman came to us about recruitment incentives, you know, we were like one of the first ones, I felt, that were trying to take advantage of this. And now it seems like everybody's doing it, and, but we're losing them on the other side too. So we need to, we can look at, maybe take a look at what everybody's doing with recruitment and retention incentives to keep the seasoned officers wanting to stay here. Take a look at where we're at, what we're offering, and just make sure that we're competitive so that we can hopefully fill up our slots that we have.
Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you. Plus one for alternate response and boosting our COET team, and also for, on the fireside, community paramedics, we'd approve ARPA funding for an embedded person, so more of that to help reduce just the number of 911 calls that aren't emergencies, like we had been mentioning. I think, when I think about public safety, I also think about the physical environment and the built environment and things like better street lighting, so that folks can feel safer when they're walking in neighborhoods that are usually pretty dark or alleyways. And also like a Bill Bratton model of just making sure that there's, you know, places are cleaned up that, to help people feel safer as well. So just improve, like the work that the Downtown Everett Association does with cleaning up graffiti and cleaning up litter and garbage and alleyways and just making the space clean so that the perception of safety is there as well.
And in a different kind of safety, I would also like to have some exploration of traffic calming measures that we could do through our neighborhoods. We hear a lot of complaints about, you know, people cutting through speeding and, you know, just all sorts, every neighborhood is having it. And, you know, anytime something happens on the freeway, they're all down every single street and, you know, speeding around. And also bike and pedestrian safety. I mean, I think sidewalks and bike lanes that feel like, you know, that you're not gonna get killed in them are important in terms of safety and also have an environmental benefit to in our community.
How much are we spending on public works cleaning up around the city? Like, yeah, that's a good question.
Councilmember Fosse.
To tag name off of that with the public safety, I would like to know, I guess, a little bit more into what are those lower, you know, expenditure type of traffic calming measures that we can pursue and that other cities and counties and other areas have successfully done. I know- I know Oregon has quite a few areas that have done some unique things, and I know that sometimes we run into rules or laws or, or other policies that prevent us from doing some things, but if there's some changes in those because other areas have had success, that might be an avenue that we can look into in seeing how there's a pathway forward and things can be feasible.
Go ahead, if you. I get a lot of emails from our neighbors and residents over the speed racing. Evidently, at night, the city turns into race, several different types of racetracks with loud mufflers. So there's no need for that.
Yeah.
Not, not trying to, the people aren't trying to beat the commute. You know, I mean, it's, I can hear them, too, from my house, so it's a pretty big issue.
Councilmember Fossey?
I'd like a periodic updates and kind of involvement in the direction that 988 is going, and how that is impacting any of the work that we do or any of the goals we're, we're going towards, and kind of look at that more of a longevity thing, and so if there are changes coming down the pipeline or intent, that we also make sure that our plans are kind of incorporating that.
Councilmember Volkley?
I'll save it for the stadium.
Okay.
Parks, art, and libraries, which aligns with the mayor's priority of parks and recreation.
Thank you. I, for, this would be, at the retreat I had mentioned that a lot, one of the first dominoes needs to be the levy lid lift for funding. For parks, as the mom of two young kiddos, I can definitely say that some of our park structures might need to be replaced on a more frequent basis than our current cadence, but that requires funding to, to have that speed pick up a little bit quicker. And then also just reimagining parks as more than just a playground. I think, you know, I hear from adults that are hoping to have more pickleball courts in the area, like fixed structures for, like fixed netting for pickleball courts, and I think that folks that are utilizing those open spaces are more than just moms and their little kids, it's families, and it's adults, and it's people with disabilities, and it's people from all walks of life, so expanding our park offerings, maybe through art and books.
Councilmember Volkley?
Well, of course, more parks, you know, what is the land, how can we get it? And it was just so amazing hearing, you know, that their neighborhood, the Northwest Neighborhood has five parks, but they're having issues, right? So parks aren't the end-all be-all, because we need to feel like we can be there whether we have children or not, and so.
Councilmember Fossey?
So these quality-of-life arenas are, are really important to a lot of our neighbors, but I don't know if this would be the topic area where we would have like our climate mitigation plans, our tree canopies, like the, the more environmental issues, because those are pretty important to our communities as well, is that where this would be falling under?
Yeah, I was surprised that that didn't come up as a priority in those discussions, but, so yes, let's just throw all of those out as well, and then, like I said, we're paying Kathy to figure out how to, how to group these things.
Kathy, I would like to know how we're doing on our climate commitment act, the, the.
I'm an action plan.
The action plan. How has that been going?
I thought you were asking. I wanted you to answer.
Rhetorical.
And the tree committee was actually folded into the parks board, so the, the tree canopy piece is a part of the parks development work now.
Fantastic.
Well, I would certainly like to see how we could get our libraries back to being open every day and fully staffed, so. And we've got our new library in South Everett, so we want to make sure that it's accessible to as many people as we can get, so.
Sure. Councilmember Volkley?
And clean, speaking of a library and it being new down in Evergreen, it's, has some building issues. Would a task force on keeping the communities safe from bullying and discrimination be in, well, I mean, it's quality of life. Nobody likes to be bullied, and we can't really necessarily do it on video games, but we can perform in real life, so.
Councilmembers Arlingo, then Councilmember Schwab.
On the subject of parks and clean, I know several people, and they know several more, who are out pretty much every day picking up trash, putting out trash bags, picking up full trash bags, and I, there may be some ways we can better use those volunteers, recognizing them or making things a little bit official, because I think they sometimes not, are not sure. I mean, they do it because they choose to do it, and I really respect that, but I think we ought to, has fully recognized that, kind of the way we do things like Forterra, where we try to improve the parks as a cooperative program, this might not need any separate supervision like that, but I'd like to recognize it and make sure they know.
Thank you. Councilmember Schwab, and then Councilmember Fossey.
Yes, the Parks Department's doing a great job. I, I do agree that was brought up earlier about the rotation and the quality of play equipment. Most of, most of the things that I hear in, like in my district, are the cleanliness and security. Also, I guess I would like to know for sure if, if the pool is, is that, is that, what would it take? Is it, you know, obviously revenue, but maybe just one more evaluation at some point before, at my time, it closed, so, and where, where we're at on the pool. Thanks.
And I'll just say, when I came on council in 2004, the Parks Department was approximately 17% of the city's operating budget in the general fund, and I think the last time I calculated, it was a year or two ago, and it was a little bit below 7%. And so the way that we have decided to prioritize our spending has been away from the parks in a big way, and we all suffer for that. We have not kept up with growth. We have never fulfilled the promise to the areas in the South Everett that were annexed and were told that they were going to get parks and sidewalks, and I would like to, I would like to put forth, and I don't know if this is in the Budget Committee, which is going to be a committee of the whole, or if this goes under the parks and recreation work, I would like to look at a parks funding levy of some sort that would be dedicated to parks. I think that our community would support that, and it would also protect the parks. My concern with the general levy lid lift is that parks is always the first thing to go and the last thing to get funded, so my concern is that any funding that has a more general, broad use will be used to fund a lot of the other priorities that we have talked about tonight already that always seem to be the most pressing. So I'd like to, to revisit the idea of a parks funding levy as its own standalone funding source to, to secure funding for parks. Councilmember Fossey, and then Councilmember Ryan.
Two comments. With regards to kind of what Councilmembers Arlingo was chatting about with the volunteers and utilizing volunteers who are going out and cleaning up, one of the priorities that I had mentioned in conversations and brought up that I didn't see on this list was community engagement and increasing civic engagement as well as responsiveness to the community and having them engaged in the process, and I, I think, you know, engaging in volunteers and having that, promoting that kind of involvement is, is, is a good thing and something that we should pursue as a priority. But my other issue is, I know we're going through this line by line and kind of looking at this, and it's going to take some time. I'm sure there are some public commenters that are in the audience that would probably like to know if there's any resolve or comments that we're going to provide to them and address that, and since we weren't allowed to have any comment in the initial time period to address any of their original complaints, maybe we could do that, so if that's what they're waiting for, to hear if we have a response for them, then we can provide that, but just putting it out there so people don't have to wait till the end of the meeting to know if we're being responsive to them.
Let's take a break, let's see, where are we on our list here? We're in park, art, and libraries. Why don't we finish comments here, and then we can take a reprieve to do council liaison reports? Yes, Councilmember Ryan?
Sure. My last thing about parks, arts, and library, plus one for climate in this section, I think that's really important and kind of all encompassing a lot of the work that we do. I'm glad that the city has the 1% for the arts fund, I'd like to see more, I'm really excited about all the murals that have been coming in different neighborhoods like Delta and down at the Everstation District Alliance, and I was thinking about murals and how it contributes to the character of the city, and that historic preservation also really contributes to the city as well, so ways that we can preserve the historical buildings that are downtown, but also better utilizing them for things like housing and filling vacancies and whatnot, but in a way that also honors and celebrates the city's history.
Anything else? Okay, well, we will take a little reprieve here, we'll do our council comments and liaison reports, so that some of those residents that came here to speak to us might take their leave. I'll start at the end there with Councilmember Vice President Toohey.
Thank you. Well, I want to thank everybody that came tonight, and I, I'm really sorry that the Waits Motel is still the way it is. Hopefully, maybe we can try to see what, what can happen there, we'll have to work with staff on that, but thank you for being here and bringing it to the forefront again to us. Two weeks ago, I attended Everett Housing Authority meeting, community meeting at the Baker Heights Phase Two project, which they call now Park District, and they did a presentation for the neighbors there, so it was very interesting. The neighbors do have, are very articulate in some of the things they would like to see as part of the project. It could have up to 1,500 apartments and as high as 12 stories, so it's very impactful for that neighborhood, so I think it was just the beginning of some of their sessions on, on working with the community, but I'm really impressed with the neighborhood coming together and already having articulated a list of items that they feel would be important with this part of a project, size of a project in the neighborhood, so, anyway, I enjoyed going. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schwab?
Yeah, thank you. I did have a question, I didn't mean to put the administration on the spot too much, but you're, we're all aware of the Waits Hotel and the issue. I was just wondering if the staff have considered much, is there something, a couple of comments you may want to talk about? I'd love to hear them.
Well, I'd like to defer my comments to Chief Templeman, who sent some information out earlier, just to summarize, but it certainly is high on our radar as, as well as our police and our legal team.
Thank you. Dan Templeman, police chief with the city. I guess I first want to start by just recognizing the, the residents from the Northwest Neighborhood for coming out, and many of them I've met over the years and can attest to the ongoing challenges that we've had in that area with not only that specific property, but other, other properties. I guess two things that I'll address, and again, they were shared with you already, but I'll just repeat them. You know, we're taking a dual-pronged approach here in addressing the issues at that location, and it involves utilization of our patrol resources, so we've got high visibility, high visibility patrols in the area. We have just recently adopted a new, a new strategy for our patrol division, as I mentioned, called Area Emphasis Patrols, or AEPs, where we actually have a call come up on our screens every four hours for certain areas. Right now, we only have two locations in the city where this comes up, where we're having problems, they've both been mentioned tonight during this meeting, where our officers are actually responding to these areas even if there's no call for service, just to provide additional police visibility in those locations. Again, that's every four hours that that comes up. Now, there may be times where due to call load and staffing that our officers are unable to respond, but that's one approach we're taking. As you've heard from the community members, we do respond to that location very quickly when we do get calls for service, again, call load and staffing dependent, and we have utilized specialty unit resources like our anti-crime team to conduct operations up there and our gang response unit, and we have made arrests, you know, over the years there as well. On the code side, that's kind of the more civil enforcement side, although there is a criminal component that is associated with code enforcement. If you recall, you all passed last year some amendments to the Everett Municipal Code that affected code enforcement and how we enforce chronic nuisance. We're still working through some of those because now we've got to adopt a new, a new process, given the, the adoption of the revised ordinance, and so we're working with public works and code enforcement. As you know, code enforcement no longer works in the police department, it's assigned to a different department, so our administrative sergeants are now responsible for putting together the, the cases and issuing the violation citations and, and continuing to work with those property owners, and this is a property that was put on notice. I issued a notice and demand letter last year on the property. They did reach out and engage with our administrative sergeant and have been working on plans to try to mitigate some of the problems, and, and we'll see temporary improvement and then fall back again, and so obviously we've not seen the, the type, the level of sustained improvement that we really need to see in that area. So we continue to work with internal and external legal counsel on our next steps, and, and that is occurring this week, and so, again, we will continue to, to look at it not only from a enforcement perspective, but also from a chronic nuisance perspective as well. And one last comment I'll make on the chronic nuisance piece, and that is that, you know, there's the potential to fine a, a property owner for continuing and ongoing violations of chronic nuisance order, or chronic nuisance ordinance, and also the ability to, if, if we can put the case together and have enough evidence to pursue a misdemeanor for permitting a chronic nuisance to occur, and so those are a couple of the avenues that we will be looking at once we get to the point of issuing the violation citation, if we continue to see incidents that qualify. And remember, not every call for service, if you hear 200-plus calls for service, not every one of those will qualify. Most of them probably won't qualify under the ordinance. A call for service does not, right? You have to have activities or police reports qualifying incidents, so I just want to make, make note of that.
Great, thank you. And then for tonight, I'd like to address a particular issue that's been gaining exposure with our fire and EMS system. When a medic unit or an aid car treats a patient, let's say at your home, and then transports you to the hospital, there's a lot of time that they spend at the hospital waiting to transfer your, the patient to the custody of the hospital. Now, our system is not designed to have half-hour, hour, two-hour wait times, basically a group of personnel just standing by at the hospital, waiting. Obviously, if you're the sick person, you're not going to want them just to leave you in the hallway without transferring you to a nurse or, call it custody, someone at the hospital to receive you. So our, so that's a lot of downtime, there could be incidents nearby where our units could be at the hospital and they can't respond to your house because they have to stay there, and so another unit will have to be coming from a farther distance. I don't know the scope of it, but I do want to prevent, or at least deal with the risk, so what I'd like to do is ask, make a motion to ask the city attorney to assist in developing a city ordinance, requiring all medical facilities, including emergency healthcare facilities within the city limits, to accept, that, that accept custody of a patient transpired by within the city limits, to accept, that accept custody of a patient transpired by one of our units, that there be some sort of regulation or requirement for the amount of time, undesigned at this time. I think there needs to be more research. I'd like to work with the city administration and the fire chief to see where that timeframe is. But I just want to prevent the risk there of our members, our firefighters and paramedics being out of service because they're just standing by when they should be able to respond to more calls.
Councilmember Ryan seconds. Thank you. We have got two councilmembers that are, at least two, that are willing to work on that. And so we'll have you work with the city attorney. When you are doing some of your research, I'd be interested to know what impact this is having on our overtime budgets for our EMS staff as well, because I know that sometimes we have to call in another unit to cover for them if they're sitting there waiting.
And I'm not speaking of any specific events that happened, but this is more of a risk prevention for our city. And I know it's a larger problem, too, in other parts of the county and the state.
Yeah. Councilmember Vogli?
And I imagine that also has to do with the nursing and the staffing issues at the hospital. So I don't know how that folds into it, city ordinance, but I can imagine that is part of the problem.
Councilmembers, Ilinko?
In my discussions with Chief DeMarco, he mentioned that, you know, it's not the trucks that cost, it's the staffing and that sort of stuff. And they're a very sharp group of people, as Don would attest. And I think they budget to some degree times to this. They know what some of those times are. Not that they can predict each one, but that that becomes a part of the budget and a shifting of a cost. So I would also like to understand that better. I suspect that our first efforts in this will be understanding the drivers of that cost and the magnitude of that, and then that can inform what we might do in terms of an ordinance.
Thank you. Anything else? Councilmember Fossey?
First of all, thank you, Councilmember Schwab, for bringing that forward. And hopefully, this will lead in a positive direction in both our public safety and having to deal with our healthcare workforce that's struggling right now as well. I want to say thank you to the speakers. I wanted to make sure that we got a response, and I know Chief Templeman is more than willing to speak with folks and give updates. And so I appreciate the information that you've provided us regarding this issue. Very, very helpful. I'm curious if maybe on our community safety committee, or whatever we decide to pursue there, if we can look at chronic nuisance properties and maybe avenues for policy to better address those particular properties, because I know the Waits Motel is not the only one that has continued to have issues. And if there is any policy arenas that we can utilize to maybe address those issues and have more positive outcomes, that would be something I would like to explore. So maybe that is something we can do through that particular committee. And I would like to remake my request for having council comments, or at least a respond period after public comment. We give time to the administration to speak to concerns and issues and topics presented by the public, but we're not allowing council to address that. And I think it's inappropriate to make the public wait until the very end of the meeting. If they're expecting a response, they should know right away if we are being responsive to their concerns, or if we are choosing not to speak on them.
Noted. Well, I'll talk with the administration and look at how we might rejigger the agenda.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. And also happy to speak with you as well, if you guys would like to meet up and have some chats, have some coffee, and talk about the situation more in detail. Thank you, everyone, for coming and speaking. I do appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Ilinko?
I do appreciate the public comment as well, and the feedback and the ideas. I guess a couple of quick notes on some perhaps more positive subjects, one large-scale, one small. With respect to small stuff, I last Saturday attended a neighborhood meeting of Olivia Park, a neighborhood that's both city and county, I think centered a little more in the county, between my district and that of Councilmember Vogli. They brought up some concerns about safety of school kids at Olivia Park Elementary. There was a fair amount of work done before the meeting. I'd like to credit Public Works and Streets on that. That was done with neighborhood members and the Olivia Park principal. And I used the process our administration has set up to help address those concerns, direct those things, and coordinate some action there. The response, they assessed the situation and identified a problem with parking and signage and some striping. And also, there were the school principal and county council member Megan Dunn. This was a city and county council thing. And that did get worked out pretty well. It was a really good example of neighborhood leaders and their coordination and communication along with Everett and the county and the Muckelteau School District. So I think this is how neighborhood groups can work really well, bringing together some of the city and county efforts and quickly resolve a problem that really was a bit of a risk to the students there. On a larger scale, you've probably heard about the commemoration yesterday of the last 747 to be completed, along with Councilmember Ryan and several thousand others, including Boeing employees and customers from around the world. I was just delighted to attend that celebration, and I sat next to a woman named Lillian, an electrical engineer like me, a little bit younger, who manages an operation at Atlas Air, the customer for that last 747 that was sitting just outside. This all took place about 53 years after production began in a yet uncompleted factory in Everett, some of it outside. And I noticed that prominent on the nose of that airplane, that last 747, was a picture of Joe Sutter, the father of the 747. He led the design and the building of the 747, and the team called the Incredibles that made that all happen. There's no need for me to tell that story, but it's well documented, but quite a number of the original Incredibles were there at the celebration yesterday in a prominent position and explicitly recognized. And the thing I want to bring up here is that I realize that all their efforts all those years ago have been crucial to Everett's prosperity since. It was a big risk for Boeing. The company was in difficult financial straits. But those, the effects of that, the success of that aircraft, have been so large and have lasted for so long. I want to make a point about world-class businesses and exporters that have their workforce here in Everett. Joe Sutter worked hard to ensure that both the design and the production teams were together here in Washington, and that's meant not only jobs, but a large flow of revenue into Washington over many years. That revenue from outside is a really important thing, a potent source of our local prosperity and the reason we have a large aerospace cluster here, so not just Boeing, but all of the suppliers and the people they work with. That cluster fosters a wide range of resources that are attractive to other businesses, which is why many of us local officials pay particular attention to these world-class businesses, both in engineering and manufacturing, to encourage them to make it all here in Everett. That kind of manufacturing is the kind of thing that's not easily taken overseas. So it's a persistent source and a potent source of prosperity here in Everett. So I would like to thank Boeing and all of their employees, partners, customers, and especially those Incredibles of more than 50 years ago.
Thank you. Councilmember Vogli?
Thank you for being here, and sorry, let's see, Bob, is that who it was that you had to leave before? Yes, Bob. They had to leave before we were able to talk specifically to him about the motel. So I'll get back to that, because right now, as a liaison report, I did go to the TAC, Transportation Advisory Committee, and a few different interesting items is down in my district, I think it, well, it's now public, that there will be eventually a roundabout at 100th. And it won't, it's not necessarily for calming, but more functional, and it's quite needed. There's no funding yet, but it's at least being thought about and in the works. Also learned that the street signs that are fading, like Evergreen Way, Fourth Avenue West, all of that down there, they're 300 pounds. And it takes significant staff power and equipment to change them out. So the signs are there, but getting the people and the equipment to actually change them has been difficult because of lack of staffing. I know that I had told a community meeting that it would be done right after the paint striping. Well, it's been after the paint striping, but there are still issues, but we got the signs. And I think that was that for that. And then AHA, which is, I always forget it, but it's for affordable housing, AHA.
Alliance.
Alliance for Affordable Housing. And was able to go to that meeting. It was Wednesday, so I left there early to come to the retreat. But the budget was approved for the upcoming year, and we were able to talk about one of the legislative bills that right now I can't think of, 1110, I think. Anyways, there was some good discussion about that, and if anybody is interested later, I can give more of an idea of what that was all about. And I just thank you again for coming down, telling us the atrocities that is happening at the hotel. Sadly, I am hearing it from so many different areas, you know? You've had the Waits Motel for 20 years going downhill, and like Fred Meyer's vast, you know, has caught right up in the past, you know, nine months. So it is a big deal. And Chief, would you, if you can, remind us of the municipal code? I remember the nuisance and the, just what number is that, so we can look at it again? Do you remember?
Might be 9.64.
That sounds, that sounds good. I'll look that up, because I do remember.
Have staff send it to us.
Yes, have staff send it to us, please, because, yeah, we did go over that recently, and there is a lot of new, great things, like daily financial obligations if you are being a nuisance in the right way. So, yeah, maybe we can just have like an update or something about what it is that staff, how it's going in the updating of the policy and how it's moving forward. Because, you know, hey, revenue, and also, okay, that's enough. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you. I also wanted to thank the commenters for stopping by today and the emails that were sent earlier this week, too, and hope to give new breath to the conversation, especially for new councilmembers that may not have been aware of the situation. So thank you again for bringing that forward. I attended the council of neighborhood meetings a couple of Mondays ago now, and it was just a great, great way to connect with the neighborhoods. The meeting's hosted at the, is a hybrid meeting. I had been planning on attending in person, but had a childcare issue at the last minute and was grateful for the hybrid opportunity to join over Zoom and still be able to give council comments and whatnot. So hip, hip, hooray for hybrid meetings and flexibility. I wanted to remind folks that we're in a new month, so the Everett Public Libraries in their last month of the spice club. This month's spice is cumin. So stop by your favorite Everett Public Library to pick up some cumin recipe to go with it and some book suggestions that go along with that. The Everett Forward Grants are also now open with applications due by February 28th, so small businesses that have been open prior to March 2020 may apply for grants if they can show that their business experienced a hardship as the result of the pandemic. So I hope folks will be able to apply for that if they need, and also to share with their small business communities. We also have some flyers and some materials available in Spanish for folks that may need that. I did want to update my colleagues about the Civic Spark update. So we had been working with AmeriCorps to hopefully bring on a Civic Spark fellow. Unfortunately, it did not work out. The applicant that we had extended an offer to ended up not being able to, didn't work out with the city. So we do, still are without a staff person. So I wanted to thank staff as well, Angie and Kimberly, for the hard work that they did to help with all of the interviews and reviewing applications and setting up meetings and whatnot. It was a lot of legwork to come up empty-handed, so thank you for your time. I really appreciate it. So not that we're down and out forever, though. I think we're going to try and apply again and just see if we can get a broader pool of candidates with other skill sets. So more to come, hopefully. And yes, I definitely enjoyed attending the final rollout of the 747. Having grown up in the area, the Boeing 747 was always just the legendary airplane, so I get to see the final one make its way out of the hangar was really, truly impressive as the queen of the skies. And I would also like to say that I was in the same room as John Travolta yesterday, so that was pretty cool. Thanks.
Thank you. And I don't have much. I appreciate very much my Northwest Neighborhood neighbors for being here this evening, and I'm sorry that we're still talking about the Waits Motel. Actually, after reading the emails that came in, I checked my email, and the oldest email that I have, I think my email got cleaned out before then, was back in 2016, but it almost was exactly the same email that I received from you. And so my apologies for that. One thing that I would ask administration is, are there more stringent measures that we should be thinking about with this chronic nuisance ordinance? And because the, if you can have 224 calls for service and that's not a chronic nuisance, then I'm not sure that we're capturing what we need in this, with this legislation. And I would like to see us be very aggressively handing out fines and fees, because I think money talks with some of these. A lot of the landlords that are having chronic nuisances, I don't, I won't say that this one is, but I know a lot of them are absent. So they're not around to see really what's even going on in their property. They're just, you know, kind of living out their life wherever they live, outside of our city, and not having a lot of on-the-ground time there. So, and then the other question that I have is, and would like to hear from planning about this, is what is the option of downzoning this property, and particularly if it's up for sale? I mean, is that an option that we could take into consideration? I know we normally, you know, kind of have this amortization period where you really have to go ask for a change of use or something before we implement the new standards, but it would be interesting for me to understand what the options would be for that, if that's something that we would like to consider. It's not the best use of government power, I don't think, but given the circumstances, it may be something that might be worthwhile us looking into. Finally, I'd like to just report that I met with some representatives of the League of Women Voters, and I don't know if she's still here, and Pola Council, yes, last week, and talked about how, what we could do to sort of outline the process for the roadmap for the next redistricting procedures and how, you know, how that's going to happen after the 2030 census. So I think there's more to come on that, more discussions to be had, but I appreciated the conversation and their willingness to be pretty collaborative and try and be, work toward a positive outcome for the next time. And that's all we have for council comments.
Councilmember Vogli?
I just wanted to add on, please, and thank you. If the motel was sold, and this is more of a legal question, would the code violation stuff disappear, or does like lean get put on the property? Would, like, somebody had mentioned that, you know, well, now the property's getting sold, and then voila, no more problem. Is it really that easy to get rid of a problem?
The code violations don't disappear. They go with the property, not with the owner. I'd have to look at the chronic nuisance ordinance and see whether that happens upon sale, but no, code violations do not go away.
Thank you. And it is 9.64. I looked it up. Thank you.
Also, Council President?
Yes.
On the redistricting, the districting that you had mentioned, I should have mentioned this in my comments and that earlier, but Councilmember Fossey had asked a month or more ago what you can do to change the process to be more in line with how you perceive it should be. You do have authority to adopt an ordinance that kind of fleshes out the procedures, as long as it's consistent with the charter. You need a charter amendment to change the fundamental structure of the process, but if you want to specify what has to happen at various types of hearing, what kind of outreach has to, you know, the the various things have been talked about, you can do that by ordinance. I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that.
Great, thank you. Yeah, we were kind of, in, in the meeting that I had, we were kind of talking about, you know, sort of that, the binder, you know, when you're like the person who does an event and then the next volunteer is gonna come along and you want to pass along the binder. So it might be nice to have something like that, that would off, offer some, uh, just some structure around how to make it happen. Appreciate that.
Quick comment?
Yes, please.
Were we, were we gonna make some announcements about the project labor agreement process?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I didn't, I failed to mention that. I did send an email to my council colleagues that the mayor's convening a working group on the project labor agreement. And I have appointed Councilmember Schwab and Vice President Tuie to be on that committee. I think they will help to flesh out from the council's perspective how that, uh, that legislation could come forward in a new form. And since they were neither, neither of them worked on the original ordinances that we had considered, I felt that they would be probably the most neutral parties or be viewed as the most neutral parties. Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you. I would like to maybe make a suggestion or open for discussion, possibly putting a due date on that report coming back before council. Cause I would worry that it might take a little while to get the ball rolling. And then all of a sudden it's, you know, 2025. So I think having a due date might be helpful just to make sure that it comes back in a timely manner.
Yeah, agreed. I think the mayor's working on pulling the meeting together so that they can, I think, put some structure around what that will look like.
Yeah, we've been doing some groundwork since January and we are just about ready to have completed the outside stakeholders beyond the council members and our city staff for this task force. Our intention is to have the first meeting probably early March, latter September, and be done with the work this summer. And we can certainly give you more definition over the next few weeks.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Once we have our committee established.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I guess if it's a Pacific Northwest summer, like July 5th is what I'm hearing.
Not, not certain yet, but we'll be happy to give you more clarity on that once we have the committee. Cause part of it will be determining the committee's availability to us too, because we want to be sure we have all the stakeholders at the table. But certainly this summer. I mean, our goal was just about a six month process at most, so.
Great, yeah, follow up would be appreciated, thanks.
Great, let's return to our work on our priorities. We got our residents who were waiting for us out of the door. Oh, Councilmember Ryan?
Okay, so back on the topic of Park, Parks Arts and Libraries. I know. Councilmember Schwab is gonna be thrilled to hear this. Don't look resistive. Salty Sea Days, I'd love to see a way that we can possibly bring back Salty Sea Days. You're welcome. All right, moving on, thank you.
And transportation is the next subject. So that aligns in the major infrastructure. And is there anything you would want to move forward for transportation? Councilmember Vogli?
Yes, uh, so changing those seven lane highways down the middle of our city to maybe having, oh, I don't know, bus only or just changing it all up to give more room to, um, high occupancy vehicles or non-gas powered, i.e. bicyclist pedestrians. And/or when it does snow ridiculously and there's no sidewalks available anywhere, but the streets are shaved. I know, I can't think of the word. Allowing the outer lanes to be used by pedestrians with some kind of interesting bulletin board, electronic something or other that says cars, no. But people, yes, so that they can actually get around, because people are walking in the streets anyways.
Councilmembers are linggo.
In my district, I've heard from neighbors about Everett Mallway as one where they would consider the far right lanes being transit and right turn onlys to make that a little more travelable. I guess along with that, I would say coordinating with the redevelopment plans for Everett Mall. There may be a way to make that a more inviting zone. Cause I know it is a challenge getting, especially left turns in and out of that area.
Councilmember Fossey?
Well, I mean, preparing for sound transit is gonna be part of that, assuming.
Sound transit preparedness.
Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you. We had mentioned before traffic calming, so definitely plus one for that. Traffic calming through our neighborhoods. Um, I know that sometimes our speed bumps aren't allowed anymore. However, I think there's other things that can be done, like street murals and street trees and street road diets and all sorts of things. So just ways that we can slow down traffic in our neighborhoods, keep people safe would be great. Part of that includes improving our bike and pedestrian infrastructure, especially around schools for little feet and little legs that walk to school. I think that'd be amazing. And concurrently with that, um, ensuring increased mobility for people who don't have the physical ability to walk or bike. So folks in wheelchairs and other mobility devices would be great. With transportation, I think a lot too about Everett Transit and the great work that they do. And I know that they're, it's part of their plan to improve our bus stops, like with better lighting. Like I mentioned, public safety, so supporting efforts around that. And then it didn't come up during our retreat, but last year, Council President Stone Cypher had asked for administration for an update on the Bike Master Plan and it never came back before us. So I think it'd be great to get a refresher on that, because I think it's about a decade old at this point. So, um, yes, thank you.
Councilmember Vogli?
Uh, the TAC is also looking in on that, just so you know. So it's talked about a little bit at the Transportation Advisory Committee, but there you have it, yeah.
Transportation. Councilmember Schwab?
Yeah, I'm just gonna pile on a little bit about the traffic calming. I know, and I'd still like to look at reducing our speed limits on some of our roads and make it more bike and pedestrian friendly. I'm looking forward to the sound transit plans for the Everett Light, Light Rail Link. So I'm certainly like, I'm looking forward in the next couple of years here to start planning once that plan gets kind of more solid.
Uh, Councilwoman Tuie?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure, I would like to make sure that all of our schools have crosswalks and everything's painted and lights. You know, I know some of them have more flashing lights than others and some have, you know, don't have sidewalks on certain areas. And I think that it would be really important to make sure those are just all beefed up as much as we can get.
Councilmember Vogli?
Going along with that and also Councilmember Zarlingo's, um, discussion with the Olivia Park Places, parking enforcement? I mean, just, cause there's a lot of times that cars park in spaces that children should be walking, whether it's to dance class or school. So, but not for, okay, yes, that's it.
Councilmembers are linggo.
I would like to recognize in terms of the response to the Olivia Park residents, that was, they did a great job. They looked at the situation, city, county, explained the situation with respect to signage, striping, and then enforcement. So they are, I think there's a great model there for things operating the way they should. It was just wonderful to hear.
Great, Councilmember Ryan?
Thanks. That reminded me, and it might be more of a comp plan thing, but looking at minimum parking requirements in the city and also addressing, uh, parking downtown and ways that we can, cause I know there's potentially gonna be timed parking or pay parking downtown, but ways that we can help our business owners downtown still be able to get to and from their vehicles or zone parking or parking parking, parking downtown, parking everywhere, parking.
Any other transportation items? Sounds like a good list.
Next topic is the levy lid lift.
Thanks, um, and I mentioned at the retreat as well to look at, uh, not just the levy lid lift, but what are other options? Like it was mentioned with the Parks District, uh, public safety levy, library levy. I know King County just put a, voted to put a levy on the ballot for crisis care centers. So I think that there's a lot of different options and just weighing out what they are and what would be a good path forward for dedicated funding for keeping our city afloat would be great.
Councilmembers are linggo.
I, on that, I guess I'd suggest a shift more toward revenue generation or rationalization as the, as the goal, because the levy lid lift is a tool, not a goal. And what I would like to see is us work toward alignment between what citizens will vote and pay for and what kind of city they want to have. Cause I think that's to, to address Councilmember Ryan's comment, again, kind of piling on about, or no, your comment, President Stone Cypher, about parks funding. That's something that touches everyone. We aren't doing as much of it as we used to, nearly. And, and, and yet it's eroded away so far that I think a lot of our residents are not quite aware of that. But this is one of those cases where I think if we look at it as a rationalization of, of revenue and an alignment of what kind of city people want to have and what they're willing to pay for. Because there are certainly problems with getting these things passed. And, and I think that the, the best outcome we have is if we get those things in agreement. Because it may be, it may be a levy lid lift. It may be there, well, two dozen or so other strategies that were in the sustainability report.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the Budget Committee has some work to do to revisit. There was a memo, it predates most of council members, but there was a memo that we had from administration several years ago that talked about all of the options basically for revenue generation. And we just need to dust that off and update probably the results of it and have that come forward.
Well, and some pieces of it were things like the, um, this potential switch to a regional fire authority.
Yep.
There's also the work going on for Everett Transit, Community Transit, potential consolidation. So all of those things do work together and they're all sort of things our, our, our community members will be thinking about when they vote on any revenue changes.
Vice President Tuie?
Yeah, just, uh, you know, we've had this conversation several times over the years and it, it seems, um, we always tend to go back to some type of a levy. And, you know, I think if, if the Finance Committee can flush it all out, that instead of just having the conversation and saying, yeah, that looks like it may be a good idea, if we do move with something, we, we need to go out to the public and make sure that it will work. But we also need to set a timeline, so a work plan, so that we plan around and have enough time to market it and talk to people and, and get the wording just right. And so I, I always hate to feel rushed on these kinds of things. This does take about a year and a half or so to really get it planned out and flushed out. So, um, I mean, I think that's kind of a high priority for me. But to come with a work plan so that we can actually get it accomplished, if that's what we decide.
Councilmember Vogli?
And once we decide on putting it on the ballot, then we're not allowed to talk about it anymore on the diets. So there's that.
Councilmember Schwab?
This definitely needs another longer meeting. Just, I just wanted to share a couple of thoughts, maybe someone's watching or will watch it. It's difficult to ask for a revenue increase for something that already exists. Um, in essence, we need an increase in revenue just to maintain what we have. I think the city has done a great job, especially this mayor staff has done a great job of finding ways to reduce their, our budget and keep, maintain our budget at a lower rate than inflation. The, the problem is that we have shorted the city, it's some infrastructure funding, that in the long run, it may take more money. Because, you know, if you don't keep a, a building to a certain level, your infrastructure a certain level, it, it costs more in the long run. We're actually, and it's very difficult for us, or as, as a mayor, or as a staff, or us trying to serve the community to say, we're actually gonna have to cut something if we don't, we don't pass it, an increase in tax. There's a real reluctance to do that. So I just think that's the difficult issue. And I don't, for those watching, I don't, I don't, you know, I don't want people or, or residents to take this as some sort of a threat or a what if. But I mean, there's just gonna have to be a point where we're gonna have to cut something. I, I just can't, we have to abide by state law. We have to balance our budget. And at the current rate, we're getting farther and farther behind. So it's a, it's a very difficult task. I think the five of us here that recently now have been here a year, we are all feeling, I'll just speak for myself, I suppose, I'm feeling the weight here of trying to provide the services that, um, that's needed without the revenue. And the way inflation is moving, it's just compounded the problem. So I guess I'm just, don't mean to sound too whiny or negative here, but I just think there's a certain reality that, um, that we're, that we're dealing with. And I know that, I, my hat's off to the mayor and their staff. They've just done a great job dealing with it. And all of us here, we're, we're all, we're, we have a lot of heavy lifting, a lot of work to do with it. So this may be one of our biggest challenges in our next couple of years. So if any group can do it, this can, and this mayor. So I'm confident that we can get through this, but it's gonna be tough. Anyway, thanks.
Thank you.
Moving forward then to worker issues and labor.
Councilmember?
Well, I guess it depends on what the mayor's committee ends up doing on whatever they're doing with the PLAs and how much they accomplish with apprenticeship utilization. But I have a feeling that there will probably be more with apprenticeships that we may want to look at. So, um, that should just be supporting that kind of workforce development, looking at maybe at some of the coordination between some of our educational systems. And we have some amazing tech skills and promoting that kind of workforce in any way possible in our city when we have such, you know, great educational pathways here. Should be something that we should definitely look at. I also think childcare is a workforce issue. So getting kind of an assessment of where we're at and the need here and how we can be more supportive of that. Policy arena ideas on it.
Uh, Vice President Tuie?
I have a question, um, cause I don't see economic development on our list. But I kind of falls in with supporting local businesses. So if I can throw a few things out there?
Please.
Okay, good. I would love to see how we can work with some of the downtown, uh, property owners, building owners that have empty storefronts and how we can, I mean, it just kills the rest of downtown to have almost an entire block on Kobe with really nothing retail or even anything in the stores. So there's a lot of that. There's, uh, like the Marriott has never put in their big restaurant and the Grand Avenue Apartments have a whole block of empty commercial space. And then we have our museum, our history museum, that's, that I hear is like close to having enough money to finish. But that doesn't help us and we're trying to promote tourism and bring people into the community and the city. And so those are all kind of stumbling blocks. And, you know, I don't know what other cities are doing, but maybe we can do some research on some of that. But that and metered parking would be great for downtown.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yeah, we're, we're in labor issue or?
Yes.
I think something that was already brought up, but just want to emphasize this. We have two great opportunities to train a workforce. We have the Snow Isle Skill Center. Also, I, I'm convinced that the Everett Community College Nursing Program can be expanded. And I know they have a hospitality program. I just think there's opportunities for workforce training there. training there. Was housing workforce, style housing, I know we talked a little bit about that and housing, but it would be nice if, and it was great to hear from some of our labor union representatives that a lot of their members actually lived in the in the city, which I really like those, if you work and live in the city at both, I really appreciate that. I think it really makes a strong community. Let me see. And then I think not only, not only do we need to come up with a good proposal for the project labor agreement, but I think also the apprenticeship, you know, incentives. And I know also, there's a lot of things that our our labor unions can do in Olympia, there's a lot of bills in Olympia that are, I'm sure Representative Fosse is well aware of, that having some of our local labor unions get workforce training and programs and that sort of thing could be really helpful. So thanks.
Councilmember Vogel?
Unless it's been said, or unless I misheard, being able to utilize some folks that are currently experiencing homelessness, and then working their way for a place to sleep, there's a much better way to say that. And I know that it happens in other jurisdictions. But, you know, clean up the area, it happened, yeah.
Councilmember Zerling?
I saw a report a little more than, about 18 months ago, about a Seattle Parks Department program like that, where they were interacting with some people in some homeless encampments, and they were able to transport them to areas where they could do work. And it was a, it was, it was a positive experience for those who otherwise were not able to contribute to their, their city and their living situation. So if that's practical, I'm sure it's a bit thorny, but if that's practical, it seems like a great idea.
Councilmember Fosse?
I know we have workforce shortages and those issues across a variety of sectors, and it's impacting even, you know, the city looking for staff. And housing can be a really expensive thing for urban environments. And so it makes it more difficult for people who want to live here to be able to also work here. So I think it's something that in one of our committees, whichever one, whether it's going to be workforce or housing or, that we think of the concept that our neighbors would be much happier with the concept of workforce housing than they would with nuisance properties.
Thanks. I think for worker protections, thinking broadly to all workers in the city of Everett, and if there's a way that the city can ensure protections for people who aren't represented by unions, so folks at fast food joints and places along Evergreen Way, just to make sure that the city has strong measures in place to make sure that everybody who works and everybody who has a job has protections at the workplace, and maybe increasing protections for new parents who might need to take leave. So just like thinking more broadly to to everybody that works in the city of Everett, to make sure that they are being treated fairly at their place of work. And paid fairly.
Councilmember Fosse?
I think that's also something where if we do have a committee that looks into workforce issues and worker issues, that that would be something where we would want to bring in our stakeholders and our local labor friends to help us kind of look into those issues that are affecting our workforce most directly, because they are most in touch with that. So.
Moving on to planning and land use, which aligns with major infrastructure.
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse, then Councilmember Ryan?
I think, well, this also ties into housing, and, you know, what we're looking at is our plan going forward with that, changes that we need to make. But I'm still think that there's a lot more work to be done when it comes to ADUs and promoting that. And I don't know if that's necessarily on the planning side, or assistance in that kind of planning, helping our neighbors pursue that, that may not have that, you know, expertise in those arenas. Because if we really want to promote infill, we got to make that easy and accessible for your average person to to pursue that.
Councilmember Ryan, then Councilmember Vogel?
Thanks. I think for this topic specifically, the comp plan is going to be a very heavy lift. And early engagement of the council and councilmembers that want to work on it, I think it's really important to capture thoughts and ideas before we get too close to the finish line. And such a, it's such a huge document that, you know, there, it's just unreasonable to try and make changes at the 11th hour. So I think that would be a pretty big topic of conversation.
Annexation? Councilmember Schwab?
Yeah, the comp plan's 250 pages. I I brought this up earlier. We already have the ability to have 180U in most, most of our zoning. I don't necessarily know if that's going to be, make much of a dent to the needs of our housing. We really need to start looking at our height and some of the restrictions and of our larger units on our main corridors. Unfortunately, you know, just about everything we do is going to affect our neighborhoods, some of our established neighborhoods, one way or another. So I think we need to determine what, what, try to lessen the effects. And so I'm leaning on more promoting more, more of the larger projects on some of our main streets. So, and that's all part of that comp plan, 250 pages. Maybe we'll make it longer, I don't know.
We're not trying to. Councilmember Zerling, go.
Councilmember Schwab brings up a very good point, the the single development going in at the intersection of Evergreen Way and 526 is 430 or so units. So that's where I think the largest number of units are going to come online, those kinds of developments. And he brings up a good point there. I think we'll need to focus on that. We've got to make those kinds of things happen because we can't do it. If we flooded the neighborhoods with ADUs, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have that big of an effect. And that kind of, you know, when the supply demand is out of whack, we can't subsidize our way out of it. We need to get that better in line. But also, from talking to some of the people who've been building ADUs, mostly not in Everett, places like Seattle, there are measures I think we can take, such as some of the pre-approved plans that will fix some of the problems they face, that I think we can fix without an undue impact on the neighbors and on the neighborhoods, and that we can do fairly quickly. So I've kind of been doing that as a as a side effort, and will continue that, and obviously want to be part of whatever's going on that way as we try to improve it. Because I think there's a lot we can do and do it fairly quickly even before a comp plan.
Councilmember Fosse?
Quick note that ADUs are not just exclusively about infill housing to address that. There's not going to be one solution, we need to attach it, like many directions. Transit-oriented development and those larger developments for additional housing, that is absolutely part of the the solution when it comes to our housing needs. With ADUs, that's another avenue for people to climb into that middle class bracket. So it's not just about infill, but it's also about helping people take that next step. So, and and kind of, you know, build wealth or help out family members. So that's one, just one little solution in addition to all these other grand measures. So holding that wonderful housing, what was it called, the housing study that was done? I'm missing the name right now.
Housing Action Plan.
Housing Action Plan, yeah. So the Housing Action Plan, amazing ideas in there. But maybe we can find a way to give that some teeth and figure out kind of how to make action out of that beautiful plan and study that was done. And, yeah.
Sounds like we may have identified our committee members. Councilmember Ryan?
And along those lines, there's also the Climate Action Plan, which I think also has quite a few intersections with land use and planning and the comp plan in ways that we can utilize the comp plan to aggressively address climate change in the city through increased tree canopy requirements and density requirements and zoning land use, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So resurrecting the the cap.
Councilmember Zerling?
Kind of two aspects of that. Yes, the ADUs have as maybe their biggest advantage, they expand the range of housing. They allow some flexibility that way, and for people to have some potential ownership opportunities, there may be things we would need to do ordinance-wise that would help that. And in terms of climate, I guess I want to also raise the flag that the additional lot coverage sometimes comes at the expense of groundwater, of stormwater infiltration and tree cover. And so we have some thorny things and some heavy lifting to do that way, because that's, we will run into those things if they're ever seem to be like, easy answers to some of these things. That usually makes me think I don't understand the problem well enough.
Councilmember Vogel?
Permeable.
Surfaces.
Areas, surfaces, yes. They can be done within the city, and they can be allowed for at residences. And also reminding ourselves that what's important about our neighborhoods are the characters, not necessarily the characteristics.
Okay, moving forward to the stadium.
Yes.
Just with the stadium, we'll get a racetrack. That's what I wanted to say earlier. For all the racers, they can race. And it's almost nine.
Yes. Councilmember Schwab?
Yeah, I think it's important that during the feasibility stage, that we examine the economic impact of of the stadium itself. I I think it's more than just the stadium. I think we can incorporate economic development. I think we incorporate housing. There's a lot of models out there that actually produce a lot of positive results for the community. We we really have some willing and really good owners. And so I just think there's a lot of opportunity out there.
Yeah. And this is obviously one of the mayor's priorities, so we know that this is going to have traction. So somebody will be learning all about stadiums.
I just have one comment on the stadium. My big concern is, is how are they going to pay for it? And I never did hear from when I had my presentation. So that's my biggest concern, because, you know, we have enough issues as it is, and our citizens can only pay for so much. So.
Yeah. And I think there's a lot of requests being made at the legislature. You might be able to know that may or may not be possible as well. So, good questions. Councilmember Fosse?
Thank you. I absolutely echo that as well. I think that that's the number one question that needs to be answered. And and any updates would be appreciated as well. I feel like it came before us, and then I haven't heard anything since. So as Chair of the Economic Cultural Vitality Committee, it would have been nice to be kept in the loop on that. Another concern or priority I'd like to see with the stadium is ensuring that the labor that goes into it and the vendors that are there are Everett, as Everett-centric as we can make them be. So, you know, scuttlebutt beers on tap, and Brooklyn Brothers pizza available, and just ways that we can incorporate local vendors instead of national chains to be celebrated at an Everett Stadium, I think would be amazing.
Yeah, I would say they've done a really good job of that down at the event center.
Councilmember Zerling?
Just a quick question. I know that we had gone forward with a study cooperatively with the county. Does anybody know when that was supposed to be, expected to be completed?
No, not, not in this room, but certainly there are people who are closer to this than I am. So we'll get back to you on that.
Not urgent, but I was curious. Thank you.
And last, but not least, childcare. We touched on it earlier as it related to worker issues, but it really does weave its way through each of these. So.
Just addressing the massive childcare desert that we have in the city, and childcare affordability as well. Because even if there is a childcare slot available, you have to be earning a substantial amount of money to put your child in daycare so that you can go earn an extra two bucks an hour. I think it's ridiculous.
Councilmember Fosse? So this is an equity and workforce issue. I think that this should also be key on the radar for whoever our legislative team is to be advocating for this. Because there's a lot of pathways that are viable when it comes to that, that we can't handle municipally, but we can advocate for. And they need to be advocated for.
And I would just put forth on this front that, in my day job, I'm working with a client that is trying to, an employer that's trying to put a childcare center, and it's not as easy as it would seem. But I'd like to know if there are some incentives that we could provide at the city level for employers who would be considering building new daycare facilities for their workers or for the broader community. And perhaps just because we have such a shortage, are there policy, you know, measures that we can take that would provide incentives for development of childcare facilities?
Councilmember Ryan?
Thanks. And like I had kind of mentioned before about human service providers, there are also a number of childcare providers in the area. I think of the Early Learning Center at Everett Community College, which isn't operating at full capacity because of staff shortages and because of, I'll stop talking. So ways that we can support programs that are already in place to expand or to fill all of their potential childcare slots. Thanks.
Councilmember Vogel?
Having worked in the field, I just can't stress enough how important it is for the the people working to be treated well and to also be trained well and with experience. I don't think that we can make a policy about that, but it's so important. If you're going to put your kids somewhere, they shouldn't, yep, that's it.
Any other comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can I add one more?
Yes, Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you. I wanted to bring up something that Kathy had mentioned at the retreat last week. You had mentioned, asked a couple of times, what would make the committee structure work? And I needed to think on it for about a week now. And I think that, I think a shared understanding among councilmembers of the the purpose and the reason and the direction for each of our committees is going to be key. So that instead of it sort of being like, oh, we're going to take up these issues, like, what does that mean? What does the final goal line look like? What does the final product look like? So a shared understanding of what our committees are supposed to do and how we're going to get there would be great. And I think in addition to that, it also requires a shared understanding from council, but it also requires a cooperation from administration to help us with the answers that we need and with the work that needs to be done to bring us in ahead of time on some of these measures, so that we're not having our committees be just a report. some of these measures, so that we're not having our committees be just a report out like we had had frustrations about last week, so that we're working with staff and with administration earlier in the process to make sure that we're all, that councilmembers are being utilized as a resource and not a roadblock. Thank you.
Councilmember Vogel.
And I think to really put a pin, or a pin, a point on that point, when Council President Stonecifer said, well, the stadium, the administration wants it, so obviously there's going to have traction, that type of thing. We need traction, I guess, you know, because there are some great things that we have put on a list this evening, and if we can't get anywhere, then what's the point? But I think that we can get somewhere, even, and that is all.
Yeah, and I think, so my vision of how this would work is that we will somehow, we'll get to the point where we know what the committee structure is going to be, and then the committees are really going to have to work with administrative staff teams that will come to that committee and say, okay, what of this, you know, because we obviously have way more great ideas than we can implement in one year, so what are the priorities? And just kind of going through the process of, what's the most important thing that we can think of that we want to work on? And just helping administration get on board with, okay, what are the resources that we would need to do that? Do we have them in-house? Can we get them? How can we, you know, utilize what we have, and what else would we need to make this happen? And knowing that the bandwidth of the committee is, you know, only so big, so there's really going to be some strong thinking around, and I'll leave that to councilmembers who are chairing that committee and the members, to just be like, okay, here are the things that we probably can get done this year, and let's keep the rest of this stuff on the list for, you know, future consideration. But, you know, sometimes the most important piece is obvious, and sometimes it isn't, so there may be some horse trading and thinking about, you know, what are the trade-offs that we have to make as we allocate resources to our work. So it'll all be a work in process, and thank you all for your patience in trying to, as we move through yet another new idea for committees. We'll get there. I know we're going to land on something. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Kathy, thank you so much for all your help, and we'll look forward to seeing the results of all this, and we, I'm sure we will see you back here again, because we're not done with you yet. We appreciate it. We've got an executive session, which is supposed to last five minutes, and we will not be making an announcement after, is that correct?
We will be taking action.
We will be taking action. There is action expected, so we will be back in five minutes.